Everything is okay, technically. And I will have just a very, very brief introduction about the Image at Start project, because maybe there are some outsiders, I cannot control it, who haven't heard about our nice project. Actually, I have to say in the beginning that this is the best project I have ever been in charge for, and I'm serious about it. And mainly because the people who are in there... The project has two legs, more or less, standing on two legs. One is the advanced digital microscopy in the light, light microscopy. And we have two teams. The team of Jarek Jacak, from the Fachhochschule Ober-Esterreich, from Linz. And he has doing a lot of nice technical advances in fluorescence, mainly microscopy. And he has been able to overcome the limits for which the Nobel Prize was awarded in 2014. So we are quite happy to have such a person in our team. And I think he can go quite a bit below of what he has shown us, but he doesn't have the sample to test it. So if he had better samples, he would be definitely able to go to the Nobel Prize level. We are instead working on unlabeled living cells. And recently, we have interviewed... We were able to publish a paper after more than one year of various types of reviews, where we show that we can make nice contrasting from digital image, which is much better than anything which was possible before. And we don't have the physical limitations of these images, which, for example, the physical contrasting, bi-phase contrast does have. So in microscopy, we are quite fine. And about the second leg, which is x-ray tomography, we will hear a lot today. And I'm happy to have three speakers today. People from Telch, which are doing a lot of advances in tomography. And Sascha Saink, who also has, apart from that, many industrial collaborations. So I will not speak much. And I will give the floor to the people who know much more about the things which are relevant to industry for zero than I am. Because I believe strongly that for any of these advantages things or any of these new things, it's important to know what is your technology composed of. Meaning, how your materials are structured, how they are stable, how dynamically they can behave. And this is all what my... our friends from tomography can do. The last thing which I wanted to say is that it's a pity that we cannot really build one strong institute, because it would be really strong institute. But maybe it's healthy for us to be spread, distributed, because otherwise we will start to quarrel soon. This is preventing it. So please, go on. So who is next? Is it Michal?
Well, the fans, if you think it should be me, I will do the presentation now.
Okay, please. So Michal, Sascha Saink. Sascha, can you establish yourself?
Thank you very much.
I switch it off and mute.
Bye then. Thanks for your talk. So we'll conclude this computer tomography session with an introduction of the stuff we're doing at University of Graz Science in Wels. We have a large computer tomography lab, including a total of four systems. And I come and talk defect extraction and carbon fiber reinforced polymers.
Can you open your screen?
Sure.
You, but not the screen.
Didn't start yet, so... So we're working the bots in different research projects and with different companies for lightweight materials. And what does light materials is polymer matrix composite. So in the special case with carbon fiber reinforced polymers, we not only use standard absorption contrast, but also different modalities or additional modalities. And I give you a short introduction of the analysis we did during the last two or three years. I give you the following materials we are using or we are analyzing for the different applications, like here shown for this formula one car with the composite material they're using. I give a short introduction into the special method we're using, Talbot-Lau creating interferometry. Michal already told you all about extreme microcomputer tomography and going to details with this ones. And then I give you the short examples or free examples of the analysis we did for the extraction of, for example, defects, but also for the features in the samples we're taking a look in general. First, to the material. Why are carbon fiber reinforced polymers so cool? So they're used for a lot of applications in lightweight design, for example. They have a high strength to stiffness ratio. So these are two of the characteristics, advantages of this carbon fiber reinforced polymers. They're not only like in sports or in automotive, but also in aerospace applications, for example, for planes, but also in actually in aerospace for spacecraft launchers. So this is part of a satellites mission, mission or science mission with landing on a comet. So this carbon fiber reinforced structures in this case a lander has a lot of advantages in spacecraft foremost, also for the mass and for the thermal elasticity stability. The twice finds so such a huge application area. There's several ways to produce those carbon fiber reinforced polymers. I will show you some examples for that one. But for all is common that if the production parameters are suboptimal, you can have defects or unwanted structural features. And the standard defect you can find, for example, is porosity, so pores, air filled pores in your material. This is, for example, laminate. You see here, dark ones is the matrix. And the lighter ones is the cover, carbon fiber bundles. This is how it should look like. So you may find small pores, but they won't really decrease the mechanic performance. If it's a low porosity, but it's like a high porosity in this case, for example, four percent porosity. Then this mechanic to performance basically decreases. You can have pores and voids. You can also have resin which areas. You may find a lot of those depending on the actual manufacturing process you use. So this again would be the loings, the fiber bundles with the single carbon fibers inside here. This resolution for this one with twenty-two point eight micrometre is too low. So one diameter of one carbon fiber is only like seven to eight micrometre. So those here, bundles, and in dark you see the resin which areas. And they can be initiation points, for example, for microcracks, also delamination. I show you special case, quite a new way to produce this fiber reinforced polymer. You see, for the printing additive manufacturing, and then you also can have, get the bonding. Since the contrast, and you see already here, between the fiber bundles and the matrix may not be really high. It's kind of difficult to get to the actual additional information and only for the porosity. So standard absorption contrast would be the way, the standard, the traditional way. And we use differential phase contrast and dark field contrast to get to the additional information. In general, this is true for every computer tomography system. The extra beam loses some intensity due to absorption. So this is the standard physical effect you have. But also, and this is also true for every microcity system, the wave phase changes due to differences in the speed of propagation as the SW passes through the object. And this is referred to as refraction. And also, you have some small scale wave fluctuation. This can cause this in homogenities, for example, by small scale pores and so on. And then this one with small angle scattering or ultra-small angle scattering. And this would be the reflection for differential phase contrast. This scattering would correspond to the dark field imaging. For the conventional camera system is not able to... It is not sensitive to the direction of the extra beams. So the information has to be converted to an intensity signal. And this intensity signal is generated by Talbot-Lau creating interferometer. This interferometer introduces some special ratings in this case street ratings. So this is the rating in here. This system, one of the systems in the world actually, we have in our laboratory is from Bukas Skyscan. For the system to work, there has to be free general preconditions. So the first one is that you have to have like specially correlated quasi parallel extra beams. And those are generated by this C0 rating, absorption rating. So here is the extra source, here is the first rating. Then you have this quasi parallel beams. The hit here, the G1 pattern. Rating, this one is like a silicon waiver. Like you see here, with a fifth gold layer in between, with a certain period. This one is only a silicon waiver, but also with the same structure that you see here. So this G1, then creates an interference pattern. And the interference pattern is slightly shifted. And self-images is slightly shifted when you have a sample in front of this G1 rating. And then this interference pattern is isolated, that's the absorption. And then in converts the information to an intensity modulation. You can be detected by the camera. For this system to work, you also have to have a face stepping approach. That's here. So in this case, the source rating, absorption rating is here shifted laterally. And for example, you can do this like four times, seven times, depends on the setup of the system. And then this slightly changes the interference pattern. We have the G1 rating. And then you get the modulation curve at every pixel for your detector. And then you have to have a measurement of the bottom object. And then you can extract the phase shift and small angle scattering. And what you actually get here is the information about the absorption contrast perfectly aligned for systems. And then the differential phase contrast, which looks like that. So it's really sensitive to small scale differences in the electron density of your material. And then you have the dark field contrast. And the dark field contrast is interesting because the signal is anisotropic. You see here. Here, the whole pattern. And this is the unit direction of carbon fiber reinforced polymers. So it's like carpet pattern in one directions, so in zero and ninety degrees. And for the dark field, you only get the information here in the zero degrees, for example. So the dark field signal is... At least that the measure signal depends on the relative orientation of the sample. With respect to the propagation direction of the extra beams and direction. You see in this direction here. So this is the small scale in homogenities, like pores. And those scattered information. But because the ratings are linear, which is sorted, only the component of the scattering perpendicular to the lines will decrease the visibility. Visibility would stand be like analogous to the phase change and the mean difference of the intensity. You can get information about the isotropy in this case by just turning your sample in the direction. So you scan it in one direction, maybe zero degrees. And then in another degree, then you can extract the information off both of those. And this you can make advantage of via the extraction of the fiber layer, for example. This is what we did for the resin infusion samples we get. And we did so. This is a liquid composite molding process. You see here, the schematic layer with the mold here on the bottom and vacuum back on the top. And then you actually have your reinforcement, the tri-mats here inside. And then you use vacuum and liquid resin to integrate your tri-mats. This one is for large samples and high probability samples for safety relevance. So this is YouTube videos. So here, you have the resin. And this one is the vacuum infusion back. This one, what is now dark, is the CFP maps. This is the flow front of the resin, which is by this vacuum setup, sacked into your setup. If you do this right, then you have high performance parts. If you do this wrong, you have really bad parts because you have a lot of pores inside and voids and so on. And this is even if you know what you're doing, you can have a lot of defects. But in any case, we get the samples. And this was also a collaboration with the guys from ITA. We have these small samples which fit into the Skyscan system, which only allows a sample diameter of around two centimeters and the sample rate of five centimeters. So this is disadvantage of our setup. Anyways, we have this small sample put on the sample stage, scanned it in the first position zero degree, gets one image of the dark field signal depending on the orientation of the fibers, which are now oriented perpendicular to the plane of the monitor and so on. So we do this for nine degrees. We get the respective orientation of the fiber samples. And then so on and so on. And we did it in four directions. And then it gives orientation dependent visualization. And this is not only the visualization because we can also extract then really the orientation of the respective sample. This is ongoing work by Jonathan Klings. So in total, here, we have this forty-two layers and this forty-two layers. This is the step file generated by Jens Leichert vom ITA. And this is the actual extracted orientation and color coded orientation. Depending on this sample. And this is surely not possible with standard absorption contrast, even though these are not looking perfectly because you have to do the sketchings and noise and so on. You can't get to this result with any other standard CT approach. What we also did is we take this twin with lemoned examples. And you can buy this one more or less from stock. And I already showed you here, the suspension parts from Formula One car. So a lot of parts which have this high and need a high strength to stiffness ratio and shock absorbers, for example, terminal stability. And so on, they use this carbon fiber reinforced polymers. For example, this twin weave. And this is just another weave pattern, more complex weave pattern comparison to the unit direction. And it's just so. We subjected this to impact loads and also to shock bending test in some of the stress tests. Scanned the samples using low and high resolution microcomputer tomography. And also using dark field images because it's dark with images. It's not only orientation dependent with the energy. And also gives high signal, that's small interfaces, for example, the crack interface between air and material. So you have to get to really high resolution. Even higher than this five micrometre. Also, metric box size we use here. To get to the respective information between standard absorption zitieren. Michal already said that if you want to have high resolution with the small sample sizes. So this is down side of absorption contrast with differential factor, with dark field contrast. This scattering information is integrated over the whole sample. So you don't need a low box size or high resolution. You just can use a wide picture image pixel detector. So but you get the signal here of these small cracks and defined microcracks in any case. And as I said, it's not only like the visualization. And this is the whole subject of the session today. We can also extract and quantify the defects in this case, the microcrack volume in absorption contracts. This would be like the large ones and also the delamination sensor and for the dark field contrast due to the orientation of the sample and the small cracks. You also have this intra-laminar also with in one layer of your fiber reinforcement. These small, small cracks here, which you couldn't get to otherwise. This works for 3D. So we're talking also about computer tomography. So this is volume data. You can also use radio graphic data for the extraction of the dark field. This is ongoing work within the image at start project. So we use the same samples scanned it into D and then try to correlate it with the volume of defects we get from the microcomputer tomography. We saw that there is a nice correlation actually. So this would be like the application for industry standards. We want to have a flexible system. We're just trying it out in our labs. Computer tomography, which is like add-on to existing microcomputer tomography systems. And then have a larger field of view with large samples will be able to detect defects in this case, for example, cracks in larger samples. Kind of a new way to produce this carbon fiber reinforced polymer. This is filament fabrication. And this one uses filament production. Like you see here in the filament printer with two nozzles. And in the first nozzle, you have your standard filament, like the matrix. And in the second nozzle, you have continuous carbon fiber polymer filaments. You can also have it from Teflon or glass fiber if you want to have. And this also is good for mechanic performance because it increases strength and stiffness and so on. But this is kind of a new technology. So you have to have, yeah, information about the performance of the actual system. And this one was printed with, yeah, more or less the best system available, Mark Ford's mark two American company. Must be nylon matrix material reinforced with chopped carbon fiber. So small ones. We use this sample orientation, the sample reference specimen to define a print path and try to extract this print path using dark field imaging or microcomputer tomography in any case. So this would be in the upright position printed and this in the laying, lying position printed depending on the orientation you're in printing. You have a different reading. Because... The... So high comfort. Microcomputer tomography data. You see the matrix with the chopped carbon fiber. It's here. And the continuous carbon fiber reinforced filament here. And you see it's not perfect. I mean, this is in fill. The find here, but you have like large pores inside. You have a lot of the bonding. And then you have this void between your actual fiber reinforcement. And so this is what you don't want to have. And also here, the fiber reinforcement texture wall. This is also unwanted. But to extract the orientation for the printing path from the microcomputer tomography data is not so easy. If you scan the same sample with using dark field imaging, it's kind of obvious that where because it's the scattering of the carbon fibers between the carbon fibers. Then you have here nice orientation. And this orientation doesn't quite look like the orientation, which is like defined in your control software. So this would be the example we're talking of. You should have a decent distance to the wall and like more or less ninety degrees angle and so on. And this is what you actually look like. And again, can extract it even though we still have the work on reconstruction and image quality and so on. So this is not so easy. In any case, it's a new system. So it's from 2015 and the whole subject is maybe fifteen years old in 2015. Again, this works in 2D and in 3D. So the tomography from this test sample, we already saw. If we take a look only in radiography, we can also extract like void regions and so on, regions where there is no fiber reinforcement. And this is the way we want to go with the future of dark field imaging for industrial samples, for example, for face contour, also for CFP samples. That we are fast, can have large samples. And in any case, we are flexible to take the rating into perimeter in and out of our system. And this is what we're doing and trying to develop during this project. I'm quite on time. I say thank you especially to Dali Boof organizing the session and also the organizers of the ISM20 itself. And yeah, to interact and the European Union in general. Thanks.
Thank you very much. It was great. Questions? These online sessions are not actually the best way to interact.
Yes, sir.
I still have the question. In optical microscopy, when we are using the phase contrasting, which is not exactly done technically in the same way as in this x-ray tomography, but we also have the phase shift. And thanks to the phase shift, because then you are kind of gaining the information from the phase shift, which is given by, which is caused by the material which you're observing, we are having halos. And these halos are complicating the analysis. Is it the same thing with you or these artifacts are not seen in x-ray tomography?
We don't have this halo. We have different artifacts. We have like photons, the waves. This is why this carbon fiber reinforced polymers work fine because they have like a low density. We have thermal shifts. This is a big disadvantage of the system. So we are down with the iterative construction algorithms to two or three hours of scan. And usually, the scan used to be like ten hours. So you can distance out the rating or the extra tube moves and also the ratings. And then we have gradient of higher to lower gray values within the system. So, yeah. The principle in microscopy is the same. And the usage is also quite similar to get to, in this case, low absorbing materials, but the artifacts are different due to the system setup with the ratings.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about it because, I mean, three weeks ago, the paper was out about the about extraction of information from only absorption, material absorption image. And I wonder if we can avoid or if you can avoid some of the artifacts which you have by using these more or less enhancement methods, digital enhancement methods. I mean, it's just an offer.
We are really glad. Also, Jarek gave a lot of feedback already when we're talking about it. It's the cool thing if microscopy and CT guys work together, we can, you know, like exchange new methods or new ideas, which are not really obvious to at least in our community. Send me the paper. We'll chat about that. We take Jonathan also with us. He's writing his PhD in the face contrast imaging of lightweight materials. It would be really helpful.
It's what I say, it's a pity that we are not sitting in one house and not making a Max Planck of imaging or something like that. Anyway.
This will be the future maybe for the competence center.
Okay, so thank, this was the last talk. Thank you very much, everybody. I would thank a lot to the organizers of the meeting, because it's really tough.